Good morning, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of the Education, Youth, Workforce and Youth Committee. Also joining today, committee members, Zeke Corn from the, Councilman Zeke Corn from the 1st District.
Sure.
Uh, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also, Councilman Bullock from the 9th District Committee Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also, we have Councilman Christopher Burnett from the 8th District, who is the sponsor of this bill or resolution. We also have James Torrance, Committee Member from the 7th District. We have Nikki Thompson from the City Council President's Office. We also have Nina Themless from the Mayor's Office. And the committee staff person is Margaret Rieken. So I want to acknowledge that Vice President Councilman Middleton has excused absence today. Before I start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly. And after you finish speaking, please mute yourself again until you are asked to speak again. We are meeting today to discuss Council Resolution 21-0047, our upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots in public green spaces. I don't want to read that whole recital, so I'm just going to say that, Council Burnett is the sponsor of this particular bill also. And I don't see the Council President on here at all. Okay, also, I want to recognize Committee Member Antonio Glover also from the 13th District. Councilman Burnett is the primary sponsor of this bill. If you have any open remarks, Councilman?
Uh, thank you, Chair and colleagues. I'll keep it short, so we can get right to it. But essentially, every year, I know all of us have the same sort of experience with mowing and navigating concerns with having vacant lots or green spaces taken care of in a timely manner in our districts. There's also additional confusion sometimes as it relates to which agency is responsible for which lot. So some lots are Department of Housing responsibility, some are the Comptroller's Office, some are Wrecking Parks, et cetera, et cetera. And so with this resolution is a continuation of the conversation that was initiated by Vice President Middleton a few years back, calling for the consolidation of contracts, there just, there being a single responsible agency, a single contract, so that there is no further confusion about who's responsible for what, who do we hold accountable for the timelines, and to make sure that our city is clean and green. And so that is the intent of reintroducing this, is to continue to push for a central agency, a central contract, or the formation of some sort of work group to be the primary responsible or organization or entity to manage this ongoing concern. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and looking forward to a good conversation today.
Thank you, Councilman. Before, as we start, I'm gonna let City Administrator Christopher Shorter speak first. He has a previous appointment, and he has to leave early. So, City Administrator, your floors belong to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman, and good morning, Councilmembers. I'm not sure if Council President Mosby is on the line, but wanted to make sure that I provided appropriate greetings. I am Chris Shorter, City Administrator for the City of Baltimore. Appreciate very much being able to join you this morning and offer testimony on the City Council Bill 21-0047-R, upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and public green spaces. As you know-
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask you to talk about your report. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You can proceed, I apologize.
Oh, it's no problem at all. And let me ask Chairman, am I limited by a certain timeframe, or?
No, 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 because I know you, I know you have to, you have another point, so that's why I would let you testify.
Yes, sir. This bill has requested that the Director of the Department of Wrecking Parks, the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation, our Department of Housing and Community Development, Head of the Bureau of Solid Waste, and the Sustainability Coordinator, a representative from the Office of the Comptroller, and the Chief of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, report on the annual cumulative total of calls for service for the upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and green spaces, and recommends that the administration take a single city agency and charge that agency with the responsibility of mowing all city-owned properties, lots, parcels, parks, and green spaces. In this testimony, I will highlight the ecosystem, if you will, of the agencies involved in grounds maintenance, and give an overview of the ongoing work we are doing as a government to improve grounds maintenance operations citywide. As the City Administrator, it is my mandate to facilitate inter-agency collaboration and enhance the operational efficiency and the programmatic effectiveness of city service. To that end, this administration is in support of any effort to improve how our city agencies mow and maintain vacant lots and public green spaces. However, we also believe that a single agency being charged with that responsibility is not the appropriate course of action to improve how the city provides these services. There are five agencies that share the responsibility for mowing and maintaining vacant lots and public lands throughout the city of Baltimore. These agencies, as had been discussed, are the Department of Public Works, the Department of Transportation, our Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of General Services, and the Department of Wreck and Parks. Of these five agencies, BCRP, DPW, DGS, and DOT are responsible for deploying teams that execute the mowing and maintenance operations. The fifth agency, DHCD, is responsible for identifying via 311 service requests and proactive enforcement the presence of property that needs maintenance. The work orders produced by DHCD are then serviced by DPW. The size of lots, types of facilities, frequency of service, and equipment and staffing needs are varied across agencies, which would complicate any effort, if you will, to consolidate city ground, citywide grounds maintenance services under one agency. DPW is responsible for the maintenance and mowing of all DPW facilities and all city-owned vacant lots and privately-owned vacant lots. BCRP is responsible for the maintenance of over 2,900 acres of park property. DOT has the responsibility for all of the medians and soft shoulders throughout the city. And finally, DGS is responsible for the maintenance of 78 acres of land inclusive of both DGS properties and other agency properties such as surplus schools, multipurpose centers, and mixed-use office spaces. This administration has already been coordinating agencies to address the issue of grounds maintenance as part of the comprehensive performance reviews in Clean Staff. In Clean Staff meetings, we review agency performance in three primary goal areas of property maintenance, street and alley cleaning, and waste and recycling. This review is comprehensive, it includes measures such as workforce availability, supply availability, service request response, and service equity. It is an opportunity to not only drive performance in these areas, but also improve data quality and collection in these domains, and to explore new approaches. One element of Clean Staff that I would like to highlight is our use of inspections to audit our operations. The OPI or Office of Performance and Innovation staff engage in in-person inspections to verify service quality and report back to the group. This requires staff to go onsite and are already receiving cleaning, landscaping, mowing services, and taking photos and videos to use as live case studies that are then used as cases to improve service quality. In addition to Clean Staff, over the last few months, I have convened a separate working group that is specifically focused on doing a series of deep dives into our citywide grounds maintenance activities. The purpose of this group is to target two specific areas of improvement, which are technology and procurement. The group is tasked with reviewing potential technology solutions that can be leveraged citywide and used by all agencies for assigning, monitoring, and reporting work, and to develop a procurement strategy to better leverage third-party vendors. As a part of our procurement review, we are evaluating the size and scope of the existing contracts and attempting to understand the impact of augmenting our existing capacity through inclusive, inclusion of more vendors, particularly minority and women-owned firms. We believe that the work of this group will enhance the quality, reliability, and predictability of our citywide grounds maintenance operations once it is completed. Our vision for citywide grounds maintenance operations is that we would have predictability and visibility about what these operations and when they will occur, and verification and confirmation after they occur. We already have the ability to do some of this through systems such as City Works and CodeMap, but are evaluating how they complement our other systems. We also already have some quality assurance activities underway, but we are evaluating how to standardize for internal and external teams. This will be no easy task, and will require a new approach to how we procure and monitor these services. It will also require a significant shift in workforce training and the development and deployment of technology, but we believe it is possible. I will say in closing, I would like to reiterate that there is already ongoing work to improve grounds maintenance. We are aware of some of the issues and challenges, and have begun to address them with an eye towards improving service quality and reviewing our existing contracts, and reimagining, if you will, our future solicitations. Requiring all mowing operations to be conducted by a single agency may have unintended consequences and undermine some of the ongoing, ongoing activities. I'll stop there, and certainly am available, available for questions.
Thank you. I'm going to, any of the Council project any questions, but I'm going to start off with the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Burnett. If you have any questions, Mr. City Administrator Shorter.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, City Administrator Shorter, for joining us today and for the comprehensive response. The first question I had was, obviously, I understand that there's internal coordination happening to improve the response. Has there been a assessment done on the cost, potential cost savings of a single contract for mowing for the city versus having each agency have a separate contract for mowing services with, you know, because a lot of this is outsourced. There are, I know that there are, is some work done in-house. For example, Wrecking Parks, I know handles many of their properties in-house, but there are also contracts that contractors involved with their work, with the median work that DOT does, with some of the work done by the Department of Housing, et cetera, DPW. Has there been a cost analysis that would show that it's more cost-effective and efficient for the city to have multiple contracts?
I appreciate that question very much. I don't know that I've seen a cost-to-benefit analysis of that type as of, as of yet. I will say, I do, I do have some concerns, and just in working with the various teams and agencies that are doing this work for the city, certainly know that they would be able to articulate some concerns as well. These parcels, many of them require different types of skills, different equipment, and in some cases, the same or similar contractor is already providing services to various city agencies, but having a single vendor providing that service for the entire city puts us as a city at a disadvantage in the sense that we would be fully dependent on one partner to provide cutting and mowing services across the board versus us breaking up the work, similar to the way that we do now, but even more so, so that smaller vendors can, can do some of the work, and we would not be in a situation as a city where we are completely reliant on one vendor. You are absolutely right, Councilman, in that some of this work is being done in-house by our own maintenance and grounds crews, and some of the work is being done by third parties. I don't know, just like I wouldn't want to see the city partner with only one vendor to provide a, such an important service, whether it's solid waste, recycling, composting, I also wouldn't want to see us as a city partnering with one vendor to provide all grounds maintenance services. I'm not even sure that a single vendor has the capacity to do that kind of work for, for our city. That said, I'm happy to go back to, to the team and, and do some work to figure out what the financial or cost-to-benefit would be if, if a single vendor was doing this, doing this work.
Got it. So, is a quick follow-up on that. Well, my understanding, though, that there are already subcontractors involved in many of these contracts anyway, so, I mean, I don't see a scenario where, even if there was one larger contract, that smaller contractors still wouldn't be involved to some extent as subs on these, because I, my understanding is that, that, that's already the case anyway on some of these contracts. To, I guess, shift it a little bit away from single contractor, has there, and you sort of referred to it a little bit around the sort of group coordination, I, I guess the other, the question I would have around would be single agency responsible, and there being some delineation of the work, perhaps by region, or some other way to organize the contract management side? Has there, has there been any exploration there, so that there is just one? And the reason I'm saying that is to give an example, a few years back, we had a situation where Baltimore City Schools had a contract for mowing their, their spaces, and, and then Wrecking Parks also has a contract, and there are spaces that are contiguous, where the lines between the school and the parks are right next to each other, but they were on different mow schedules. And so you'd have these situations where the school, part of the school would, you know, a citizen would look at and say, well, this looks like one green space, half of it's overgrown because they're on a different schedule than the other agency. And obviously, city schools is sort of a different conversation, but I don't really want to focus on that, because obviously, we wouldn't have control over that anyway. But regardless of the fact, there, the lack of sort of, there being any sort of, all right, this is the schedule, we're doing this all at once. It just seems very inefficient to have so many things happening when, you know, even with, you know, I've, I've had situations where I've had a median on Edmondson Avenue get mowed by DOT, but the grass is overgrown literally on another city lot right next to the median, because that's, Department of Housing is working with DPW on an entirely different schedule. And so, of course, we get the calls from constituents saying, well, why didn't they finish the work? And we end up in a situation where it's like, well, not that they didn't finish, but there's different agencies, you know what I mean? Like, I have to go down this rabbit hole of bureaucracy with folks, when it, it obviously is something that if there's a crew coming out, they, there should just be this level of coordination that it's just all being done at once. And which, you know, again, just is an efficient thing to do, and one that I, I think is just, it just would make the city look better if we, you know, the sort of, because it just sort of, you, you don't really understand the complexity of it all, it just seems like we're inept, and the person forgot to do the other side of the street, you know? And it's just like, if we can't even convey to constituents that there's like a rhyme and reason for this, or that there's, we just didn't simply forget, or whatever, you know, things that they may come up with as to why that may occur, it's just a much more professional operation would be. So the question would be, sorry, I editorialized the original question.
That's all right.
My bad. The original question was, has there been exploration of a single agency being responsible? My apologies on that, Mr. Chair.
Definitely appreciate the, the comments, Councilman, and, and the question. Yes, there has absolutely been a great deal of discussion around how the agencies manage, and if it makes sense for us to, to, to transfer some responsibilities from one agency to the next. I will say that the core issue here, based on what you've just said, and what, certainly what we as a city are continuing to hear year after year, is really an issue of coordination. And even in what the example you just used, Councilman, it is, this is a challenge of coordination, not necessarily a challenge of management. And so if we are properly organized, meaning that we are using and leveraging our information technology systems to not just do the work, but to align and coordinate that work between agencies, then we know, we have the intelligence to know which agency is cutting which lot at what time during what week, and at what frequency. And so my, what we are pushing for as a, as a team is making sure that we're able to do that quality assurance and quality control in a standardized way across the board, that individual agencies have their own systems of managing the grounds maintenance effort, but that there is a single system for quality assurance and quality control that we can all rely on and depend on. So that is the conversation around technology that we, that we are having and that we're trying to solve for. The issue of procurement, and how we are leveraging our contracts and our contractors, and even managing those contractors, is also a conversation that we are having. And we hope that by the end of this calendar year, to have created a scenario where our procurement operation, our procurement strategy is better aligned, so that, and like you said, Councilman, in the schools, it's a different conversation, but for those agencies that, that we are talking about in that report into our, to, to our executive, that those agencies are aligned, and we do not have a situation where one half of a lot, or one median across the street from a lot are on different schedules. These are knowable operational activities, we just need the technology system to tell us. I wouldn't necessarily assume that it would be more efficient for one agency to manage. What I am suggesting is that, that the agencies involved just have to better coordinate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some follow-ups, but I know we're stuck with two, so I'll, I'll hold off on the next round.
Thank you, Councilman. I know I see Councilman Torrance, I just have a suggestion for City Administrator Shorter. I'm sure you are aware of the adopt-a-lot program. When somebody adopted, they're responsible for cutting and cleaning, they can't build on it because they had to go through Vegas to value. I'm seeing that a lot of developers who have LDA land disposition agreements here in the city, until their development starts, the city is still cutting and cleaning the grass. Why are we working with recent resources? If you want to develop that property, and you are, it's already in your LDA, the developer should still be responsible for cutting and cleaning, just like a doctor block program. Why are we now, because their development hasn't started, the city is still cutting and cleaning the grass? That's extra resources that we are spending for nothing. If you're going to adopt, if you're going to do the LDA, then part agreement is until your development starts, you should be responsible for that property because you want to develop on it. So why are we still getting DPW and all these agencies cutting and cleaning the property that, that the developer has agreement with, with the LDA, with the city to develop the property? I just want to kind of go back and look at that, because that's what's happening all over the city. I can go to Greenmount and Biddle with Rebuild Metro, they're going, they're going to do some development there. But I got to call Ms. Moore and her staff, who do a great job to cut the grass, but it's in Johnson Squares, LDA. So if it's in their LDA, why can't we now put that in their LDA that until your development starts? You should be responsible for cutting and cleaning, because the same thing they do if you adopt a block, you can't build on it. So, that was just a suggestion I wanted to kind of throw out there to tell you, if you're going back and looking at, we, we changing things, maybe we need to look at that and work through that with housing, so.
Thanks, sir. I'll-
Wait, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I don't know if Jason or Housing would like to address when they address that. I appreciate very much the suggestion when they speak.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Torrance, we had his hand raised from the 7th District. Before you start, Councilman, let me acknowledge Andy Frank from City Controller's Office, Bill Henry's Office, and also Matt Stagman from President Mosby's Office. Also, Councilman, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, well, good morning, everyone. Mr. Shorter, I have two questions. One's related to procurement, and then the other is related to improvement science. So, we have taken information from 311, correct? So I can tell you by looking at 311 reports, that there are lots that we just know historically that are going to be ones that are going to be overgrown. Are we proactively pulling those reports prior to cut, before the spring, and proactively looking to cut them is the question? It's from it. And how do we improve upon that? And how do we schedule lots that we know from the previous year that were overgrown, that we continually had to cut? So I just want to make sure that we are figuring out where we, where we have new lots that are added, where we have lots that historically need to be cut all the time, and how we use it to do schedules with not our contractors, but also our in-house staff. I just want to make that portion. And then for my second question, because my, my reception is crazy, my second question is related to procurement. Why are we, do we have a centralized way where we send out one solicitation so that we get all of the possible vendors agreeing to terms for two to three years at the same cost, so that if John Moe and Company is getting $300 per cut, they're getting $300 per cut no matter the agency? That way, because what I've seen, it's on the procurement contracts, is that the costs in the actual services are different. So like, there would be $1,200 here, 15 here, or 12 here. So it's just like, how do we have a standard, how would you say, a standard rate for our vendors across agencies to make sure that we are estimating what our costs are? Those are my two questions, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. I do want to call on Housing to answer the question, your initial question about how we prepare our schedules for this, our cutting schedules for the season, and if vacant lots, traditional vacant lots are incorporated in our, in our, in our schedules at the start of the season. In terms of procurement, our contracts are multi-year. I don't believe any of our cutting contracts are single-year contracts, they are generally multi-year with option years. Because every agency is cutting different parcels, I wouldn't, for example, suggest that the per-hour rate for a contractor cutting a median that requires an attenuator, it requires all kinds of other safety measures, should be charging the same per-hour rate as a contractor that is cutting a lot without as much risk. So we are working with our vendor community to make sure that we are properly pricing and properly scoping the service, but that service does look different by agency, and in some cases, even within the agency. So wanted to make sure I made that point. But Housing, did you, Jason, did you want to jump in on how we prepare for the season in terms of our cutting schedule?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So, we do not have a set schedule at this time for properties, so DHCD is responsible for responding to 311 complaints, but also re-inspecting properties that have existing violation notices, and patrolling areas where we know that there are going to be the need for cutting and cleaning, and may not get the same level of 311 complaints. And so, housing inspectors are prepped and ready to go in late February, early March, potentially here in Maryland where the season could start. Sometimes it gets pushed to like April or even May, but depending on weather. But the housing inspectors are ready, and they're out, they're looking for those things. And really, for us, the season never ends, because it's a cleaning and cutting situation, and so we're always looking for, for that kind of stuff. Even December, January, February, it's more of a cleaning issue and not a cutting issue, but- but we're still out there looking for it, proactively putting it in. But we create the work orders to have public works teams um cut the vacant lots, cut the vacant um buildings um that are abandoned um and clean up those areas. Um, we'll also put in for dirty alley and dirty streets um so that those can be dealt with proactively. But there isn't a, a set schedule. We're just kind of patrolling and looking because it, it changes constantly as a property gets developed or a lot gets um adopted or something of that nature, those fall off and others come on. Some areas don't need a lot of cutting, but may need to be cleaned more regularly. So it, you, there were a couple of seasons where we did try to do uh with DPW had a proactive mowing program, um but it, it quickly, trying to hit all the lots on a schedule quickly overwhelmed the resources available. And we weren't getting to the things that were being complained about um very quickly. Our short, DPW has anything else to add?
So any, is that your answer, did they get a good answer for you, um, Councilman Torrance? Is it, I know that was.
Um, Mr. Chair, not really.
Okay, you had the second question.
Yeah, so like the specifics I need for like why we don't have a schedule? And this goes back to that question about capacity and how do we proactively looking at things that we can do with our vendor capacity, correct? And so like it's troubling because we have the data, we know the lots, we know that the seasons may change, we know when people are adopting lots. Are we working internally to improve that process, to clean the data, to make the appropriate? And this goes back to that clean stat question. I think that one of the things I think I need from the agencies is a follow-up in terms of like, what are the, for your clean stat? What are the, the, the data points that you're looking at? How are you proactively doing it? Because at a point, it, I, and I, and I struggle with it because of what if a lot of our agencies, it's more reactionary and not proactive. And I think those, I think when we go into this next funding cycle in terms of going into agency funding, it's important to know that what the capacity is, where proactive things and where we can react so that we can start thinking about how we shift funding to make sure that we can do this better and how do we make the appropriate staff to do it better? And I just, I just, I just want us to think from an improvement science perspective that like some of the things that we have internally among the agencies may not be the best operationally. But my other question, let me go back to uh for procurement.
That wasn't your second question, Councilman?
No, no, it was not my second question.
Can we, can, before we start, can we at least stay with the questions and kind of save the speeches for a little bit?
No, 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 I'm just, no, Mr. Chair, I'm making requests because I asked my two questions, but I don't think the answers were sufficient to be respectful.
All right.
So what I wanted to know is the data points are for that. And then the other question that I, and the other request I would like to know is currently, what's the current rates by agencies for our vendors? So I can see it across the board and what the requirements are for those contracts? Because given my procurement background, there are ways that we can create some financial efficiencies as well. I just want to make a request, thank you.
Uh, Councilman, is that for the city administrator or representatives?
We're happy to, to work to provide that information. So one, Councilman, uh, information on uh the clean stat, um, um, indicators and key uh performance reviews that are being done during clean stat, and then the other is rates that we are, that we are uh paying for uh for our con- uh across the board for our contracts. Happy to provide uh that kind of information.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman. This is kind of sort of like uh some comments towards like uh uh Mr. Short or just any other, other agencies that are on here. I would like to see that um, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank everyone for, for attending this hearing today. Um, I think one of the things that, that is missing, and the reason why I say it because me being a former employee of uh DPW and Solid Waste uh for over sixteen years is the lack of communication between the agencies. Uh, I think we can really um probably put a dent into getting things um fixed, workload, whatever issues that we have, if there was a better lack of communication between uh, between those agencies. For instance, if, you know, Solid Waste was to come out and just say, if it's just clean the yard, um, or if Housing was to come out to assess the property and it worked wasn't with Housing, what happens is that a lot of times it'll be put in a system as if it's, you know, TCO taken care of instead, or it'd be closed out instead of us seeing in the, in, inside of three one one, that it was moved to another agency. I think that will help us out a lot and then moving forward, I think as council people, I think as the community, when we do go into looking to see where's the status of our three one one complaint is, we'll know from that point on, okay, we haven't had this issue again, there's no need to call DPW, Solid Waste or Housing. It's strictly to call wherever that vendor decided to send that issue to, we know moving forward, that's what we deal with. So I think is, I think is a lack of communication, a lack of education, educating the public on exactly what agency does what. And I think if we kind of focus on those issues, excuse me, on those uh agencies, on what jobs they are to do, it helps us out as council people and also it'll help the community in reference to when they want to call three one one in reference to a complaint, they know exactly what agency to uh reference their complaint to. That's all really I had to say, just uh basically about, you know, other agencies communicating with each other in order for us to uh tackle these issues that are brought to us by our constituents.
Well, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, I won't um belabor the point regarding the coordination of agencies. I think that um CAO Shorter um talked about some of the ways that the administration is working um to kind of coordinate these efforts uh between agencies or maybe transitioning to one to two um coordinating agencies. My um, my question, my follow-up question to that, what is the timeline for execution from those particular work groups or any type of recommendations from those work groups? Because, you know, as many of the council members just mentioned, when we're talking to constituents, they just want to see that the, the area is clean, the area is mowed. And I just want to highlight that when we, you know, when we don't mow, you know, typically high grass areas, there are other subsequent um sanitation issues that ensue because of that, rats, rodents, all of the things that, you know, we're, we're trying, we're trying to address. And so um CAO Shorter, if you could share um a timeline regarding any type of um short-term, intermediate or long-term benchmarks that the work group has developed um with regard to a timeline for, for kind of like the coordination for these issues?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate the question and appreciate the, the, the comments uh pre- before the question. Uh, let me say first that we, that all of the contracts that agencies are currently using to provide grounds maintenance, I believe, are still current. Uh, so we are not going into a situation in the next season where we are rebidding contracts uh because the contracts are um, are expired. That said, we may be letting new contracts based on the conversations and work that's happening right now. That would, in my mind, need to be done by the end of this calendar year for us to safely partner uh with vendors and provide the, the right inventory of properties by the next cutting season. So by the end of December this year, any changes we plan to make uh in terms of our vendor management structure and how we procure for third-party support has to be done before the end of December. Uh, in terms of IT and information technology improvements, uh if we are going to stand up a quality assurance and quality control system that is across the board, uh that, that work also has to be done, in my mind, before the end of the calendar year so that we are practiced and we have an opportunity to train our workforce on that system.
Thank you so much, um, CAO Shorter. Mr. Chair, um, can I recommend that we um, we add that as a follow-up action items, a follow-up at the end of this year to follow up on the progress of that particular, um, that particular recommendation? My, my second question actually has to deal with the intersection of city-owned properties and commercial, I'm sorry, privately owned, um privately owned land. Like that's a major issue in um across the city whereby um city-owned lots versus privately owned parcels of land, not, you know, not mowing the grass. Can you all speak to the intersection of how you all are enforcing that privately owned um operators are maintaining their properties on a consistent basis and not using city, not using um relevant city funds to, to handle like their, their issues of mowing, et cetera? And if we are handling those issues, can you speak to the process and timeline on how we are recouping those funds back to the city coffers? Thank you.
Want to invite uh Jason to, to respond uh if appropriate on behalf of Housing.
Sure. Um, enforcement's um in collection is really broken up uh between the occupied properties and unoccupied properties. So uh the main tool for enforcement for an occupied property where an owner just isn't maintaining it up to um normal um neighborhood standards and to the code uh is generally through citation. And that in a residential area is usually a $50 citation. Um, they have the ability to request a hearing, um, they have to pay the citation, failure to um pay the citation and correct the issue, um, the citation becomes a lien on the property, it ultimately triples. So for properties where it's just keeping up with the community standards and, and not letting things slip, the citation is the main tool. Dealing with vacant lots, vacant buildings, um, in most of those cases citations aren't going to work because there is not, um, you know, an arm to twist. Uh, the owners may be deceased or defunct corporation or something of that nature. Um, so we usually will have a, a violation notice on those, either a vacant building notice or an exterior sanitation notice on the property. We will have conducted research into who the owner is and where they actually might be, especially if it's a vacant house or vacant lot, um, to try and get that notice actually to them because, you know, sending it to the vacant lot doesn't help. Um, the inspectors will attempt to make contact, um, but the maintenance of it, if they fail to take care of it, it, it ends up falling on the city to do it. Um, that's where the inspectors will create the work orders to have um public works cut um and clean the lots. Um, and we have years ago worked with public works to um uh automate the process so that when they close out a work order, um, they're billing an appropriate amount to cover the city's costs on that property. Uh, and so that is all automated, it goes to fist finance and they will issue a bill and create a lien on the property. Um, and they do recover um costs every year um on those properties, either when the property goes to tax sale or if the property, um, if the owner sells or tries to refinance or something of that nature. You know, they will recruit some of those funds, obviously not all of them, because there's a, a significant portion of vacant buildings um that are truly abandoned. There is no owner to pay, um, and there is not a market currently um for that vacant building or vacant lot um to transfer it to someone who may rehab the building or rebuild or, or use it in some other way. So their agency through our community development side, working to address some of those issues. But that, that's how the enforcement piece works and how we recruit some of the funds.
Thank you so much. Um, sorry, that's my dog, he's here, somebody at the door. Uh, uh, Mr. Hessler, I'll definitely follow up with you on regarding specific data points um that I'm looking for related to the length of time um regarding um the citations on these particular buildings, um, the citations, fines accrued from those buildings and the also actual data point amount, um, sorry, Bruno, sorry. The actual um funds recruited from um, from that as well, but thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, uh, City Administrator, you got a little more time because we have um Councilman Cohen, and then our next question is going to come from the sponsor of the bill, um, Councilman Burnett.
Sure, of course, of course.
And real quick, Councilman Cohen, before you start, um, once um uh City Administrator leave, Ariel Gaoz will be representing the City Administrator after the City Administrator leaves this meeting, so there will be somebody on. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Um, City Administrator Shorter and all the agency staff that are present. Um, I want to put a fine point and a question on member Burnett's sort of premise around just inefficiency of having five separate agencies, five separate contracts, which again is something that we see play out most every day. Um, when folks ask us why one site got mowed, the other did not, when is the mowing coming? When are the parks going to get mowed and so on? Um, you've been an administrator in multiple cities. Is that a common practice? And I know there is this work group studying it, but is there a world in which we reduce the amount of agencies that have separate contracts? Because it just intuitively seems inefficient the way we're doing it. And I'm curious, because I know there are some cities that don't have five separate contracts, what you've seen around the country and what's best practice?
Uh, I, I thank you very much for that question, Councilman. I um have done my best not to assume, just because I've been in other cities uh and seen, you know, seen grounds maintenance operations in other cities that I know what's best for Baltimore, which is why we're talking to staff and the leaders who know the city best. Um, I will say I have not, in the cities that I've served in, seen a scenario where, for example, Rec in Parks is not responsible for cutting parks or where General Services is not responsible for cutting government buildings uh and lots around government buildings or where Housing uh is not responsible for at least identifying uh where cuts uh need to, need to take place, even if there's a third party providing the service. Uh, it, and so to answer your question, I, I haven't, I haven't seen it done that way, um, which is why, you know, the pre, my predisposition is not to assume that it would be more efficient uh or more effective managed under one large agency. And that agency would need to be large. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of parcels and properties with very complex responsibility. Uh, and agency owners currently know their portfolio and they know it well. Uh, to subsume that responsibility under one agency where that agency may not know parks, they may not know housing, they may not know uh, uh, our government buildings as well, for example, is DGS, uh would be assuming a lot. And so um what, what we have really tried to work towards in terms of problem solving is what the root cause is. And the root cause in my mind right now is lack of proper coordination uh and lack of information, and information being um monitoring, reporting and ensuring quality service. Uh, and in that way, we have, uh, we, as a city, uh, can do, can do much better in the way of making sure that agencies are working together uh and leveraging technology systems to make sure that we are allowing for it. Um, and so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I, I mean, it does. I just wonder whether, you know, in terms of that larger entity that could oversee, like part of that is, you know, maybe your office um have the long view, um, because again, it, it just feels like there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen and I don't know whether it's to consolidate from five to three or something, but again, it just feels like there's a lot of movement and confusion like we see in a lot of different scenarios with three one ones that go this way, but we're actually supposed to go that way. I, I mean, there's a lot of like disentangling that I think we as council people end up having to do. And so, again, I know you're working on it through this work group. I know you're trying to identify the root cause and where you could get better efficiencies. But, it just feels currently like there's a lot of confusion and often work is delayed, not done, and then falls on us as council people. So, you know, we just throw that out there, that I think keeping the option on the table of, is there some kind of consolidation that could happen? And a different system of monitoring, to me, seems important. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Shorter.
Thank you.
Next question. Oh, you'll comment?
I was just acknowledging and wanted to thank him for that. And it absolutely is still on the table. We have not taken anything off the table in terms of even smaller consolidations versus a large-scale consolidation. So, again, thank you for the feedback, Councilman.
Thank you. And our next question, it will come from the sponsor, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Am I coming through? Is my internet okay? Okay. The follow-up I had, Mr. Administrator, you mentioned quality control. One of the issues I know we've dealt with is where contractors may go out and do work that's inadequate or leave, you know, grass clippings and other debris on a sidewalk, that kind of thing. Does each agency, is each agency required to send staff to follow up or audit a certain percentage of the work being done by contractors only by?
Thank you for that question, Councilman. And I want to invite other agencies to certainly to jump in here because I don't want to misrepresent the work. Based on what I am learning from our discussions and certainly from City Stat, is that many of our contracts, within the contract is a requirement that the contractor take photos and upload those photos for the agency to review. What we are also learning from the City Stat team going out and inspecting these properties is that the photos and the reports in the system don't always align with the reality of what's actually happening in these lots. And so, what we are talking through is what a quality assurance and quality control system that we manage, where we are actually inspecting the work that the contractors and vendors are saying that they're doing, may be a better approach as we move forward. It will require more people and it will require more time. But, a comprehensive quality assurance and quality control system that is across the city, regardless of the agency, I think will be responsive to many of your concerns without necessarily taking the responsibility away from the agency that has the expertise.
Got it, okay. The second question I had for this round was the, and I think we've had this conversation before, but we have other agencies here. Is there a conversation happening around all of the agencies operating on a proactive mowing schedule? And I ask that just to give a quick level of context. There are some agencies that are mowing the lot, mowing lots as they are complained about. So, if there's a 3-1 call, then they proceed, but otherwise, there is no scheduled mowing. Other agencies do have proactive mowing. Is there conversation about having that be the standard across the board? And my concern is to Councilman Reporter's point around the other issues that can arise as it relates to other, you know, rodents, rats, trash, illegal dumping. It becomes sort of an equity issue in which communities that are more proactive and reporting things are likely to receive services that a community that may not know that they need to call 3-1 or may not have the bandwidth to do so, just aren't being reported. And so, these lots languish year after year until literally someone complains about it, which I think is, to be frank, a little bit unacceptable when these are city lots we're talking about.
Yes, sir. In most cases, starting the cutting season off with clear schedules, where we know the properties that we need to cut, we know the parks that we need to cut, we know the medians that we need to cut, is quite clear. And our agencies are able to establish those schedules and agree with our vendors on the frequency of cuts. We do, and I believe housing is probably the best example of this, have situations where we don't know where through the cutting season, there may be a need for additional cuts. There may be a need for additional work. And so, the partnership between housing and D P W is not one that we can, where we can fully anticipate the work effort or workload. So, that said, I think the answer to your question, Councilman, is yes. We have to do a better job at the start of the season, proactively identifying all of the properties that are in our individual portfolios, those agencies, making sure that where there's a vendor relationship, the vendor has those schedules and has agreed to the cuts and frequency. And then where there is not an ability for us to predict how we rotate and get those properties into our system for cuts, is something that we have to work towards in a much better way as we approach the next cutting season. I hope that answers your question.
Kind of. I think, I mean, it actually led to the committee request I had, Mr. Chair, for information. I was hoping we could submit a request for each of the agencies responsible for mowing, if they could provide the council with how many lots citywide they're responsible for. So, obviously, you know, Comptroller's Office has a certain amount, the A C D has a certain amount. I think it would be helpful for us to have an idea of how many each are, how many each have in their portfolio. I think would be helpful information for us. Mr. Chair.
That's been noted. Thank you. Administrator Shorter, thank you for your time. Stay in and ask some questions about admitting that to the council people. You can be excused, but again, Ariel Gao will represent the City Administrator. I'll see you in a few days.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
So, we're going to go to committee reports and our person is from the law department. If they do what, any comments? Mr. Victor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. No, this is Vic Turville from the City Law Department. Good morning. The law department will stand by its report and will approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Plan and favorable comments, and we have to wrap this right up.
This is Kim Knox, the greeting coordinator for.
Thank you.
And we stand by our report in terms of recommending disapproval of the bill. Thank you.
And it's not your only idea to defer to department plan also.
That's correct.
Department of Transportation opposes, Liam Davis and Tavon Braxton.
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis, Baltimore City D O T. Thank you for having us. Also joined by our Deputy Director, Tavon Braxton. And we also have our General Superintendent for Maintenance Division, Kendall Abuakim. He might need to be elevated to a panelist should a question come up. We do stand by our bill report at D O T, which is, you know, we're happy to have the conversation, but we are opposed of any idea of essentially consolidating mowing operations. You know, and I will say, it's really beyond mowing. A lot of times, it's more vegetation management. We deal with a lot more than just mowing. And I think our concern is, some of the agencies have specialized, you know, responsibilities. For us, it's really kind of maintaining the 2,000 miles of right-of-way that we are tasked with maintaining. To Councilman Burnett's question about the specific locations, I can confirm D O T has over 500 locations, green locations that we are in charge of mowing or vegetation management. For, of those, excuse me, 474 locations of those, excuse me, over 500, 474 are contracted out. 74 are handled internally by our landscaping maintenance section. So, just wanted to throw that out there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. D H C D, I don't know what's getting out.
Hi, yes, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for D H C D. Acting Commissioner Kennedy sends her regrets that she was unable to join today. And as you can see, we're also joined by Deputy Commissioner Jason Hessler. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in this important discussion. And while we do not directly provide maintenance and mowing services, we do work closely with the Department of Public Works to route work orders to the agency for cleaning. I don't want to belabor some of the items that we spoke about earlier in the hearing that arose through questions, but I will briefly describe D H C D's role in the upkeep and maintenance of city-owned vacant lots, privately-owned vacant lots, and city-owned lots that are a part of the Adopt a Lot program. As you heard, D H C D's Code Enforcement Division either responds to 3-1-1 calls for service or during routine inspections. And they're in charge with identifying these properties that need the maintenance attention and referring them to the appropriate agency. D H C D's Code Enforcement Division averages over 200,000 property maintenance code enforcement inspections per year and respond to most of them within three days. We complete 99% of our code enforcement service requests on time. For privately-owned vacant lots, D H C D inspectors use code enforcement tools to hold property owners accountable for the vacant lots and for the maintenance and upkeep of vacant lots. As Jason mentioned, sometimes there is not an arm to twist in this situation. But, our first effort is always going to try to be, through the issuance of notice of citations, to hold that property owner responsible. If code enforcement efforts fail to get the desired result, we can submit work orders to D P W to clean and lien the property. And sometimes these unpaid liens can lien these vacant properties to tax sale. And then finally, D H C D's Adopt a Lot program allows residents and businesses and neighborhood groups to steward and care for city-owned vacant lots. An Adopt a Lot license holder can create community spaces that include gardens, clean and green spaces, and recreational areas. The maintenance of the adopted lots is the responsibility of the entity that enters into the agreement. D H C D really relies on these partnerships, not only to reduce the burden on the city, but to help improve living conditions in neighborhoods. And since 2017, 426 lots have been adopted through the program. We are, as an agency, committed to working with various partners to enhance and expand efforts to maintain vacant lots and public green spaces. But, it should be noted, as noted by brother and sister agencies, that this mowing work is specialized to the needs of each agency. And it would be difficult to coordinate agency needs, workflows, and timelines into one centralized system capable of managing that wide variety of sites within the public and private realm. Therefore, we're going to stand by our bill report and recommend disapproval. There were some questions that we could try to address. One was Councilman Stokes about the land L D A agreements. That's a question that I think we're going to have to circle back on the particulars of what's involved in each agreement. So, I will follow up with you about that after the hearing. And then just one thing I wanted to note is that our inspectors are going out to visit vacant buildings and lots on a schedule every 30, 60, or 90 days. So, when conditions are seen that warrant a cutting or a cleaning, that's when they're going to put their work orders in. But, we certainly look forward to working with Deputy Commissioner, with Mr. Shorter and partner agencies to improve the process. So, Jason and I stand by to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Recreation's unfavorable.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. B C R P stands by our report that we would not be in favor of a single citywide contract based on several issues, including contract administration, quality controls, differences in contract specifications from one agency to another. And one item in particularly that we would have issue with is the inability of small businesses to have access to the contract and being able to foster those businesses so that they could respond to future awards. We're happy to work with Administrator Shorter and the council and can respond to any questions that you might have. But, B C R P does oppose this legislation.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, I guess, it's Marsha Collins for, she's not at Ariel Gao's.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We also have with us today Acting Bureau Head, Yvonne Moore Jackson. I just want to make a couple of quick statements. I appreciated the introductory and thorough remarks of Chief Administrator Officer Shorter. It was very helpful to provide the context of what the administration has been doing in regard to this deep concern that the city council has. I will say, as an agency that receives upwards of 4,000 requests for mowing a month, we have some of the most varied challenges for mowing of all agencies, we believe. We do not have a set number of lots that we may be responsible for in any one year. And we do have to work closely with our partners at D H C D. And I wanted to thank both Stephanie and also Jason for their earlier remarks. We have both the mayor and city council lots that are H C D and solid waste lots. We get the referrals from H C D for vacant and abandoned properties and non-responsive owners. What we do within our own organization is we look at every lot and we sort it and rate it as either a one, being either small or fairly clean, to two, to moderate size, there's some cleaning necessary, to three, which is major cleaning. So, our referrals tend to be areas which are also subject to some illegal dumping or to litter and trash collecting at these locations. So, it's just not a matter of pulling out a mower or weed whacker. We're also challenged with the amount of debris that has to be cleared before we can even get to the mowing, or as Liam points out, vegetation management. So, we, as our crews, take on the most difficult cleaning jobs of the lots. The contracts that we have with outside vendors, they're not equipped to handle the heavy cleaning workload. And so, we take those on ourselves. Just as a point of reference, in fiscal year 2021, we received 17,825 high grass and weed requests and another 8,994 cleaning and high grass and weed requests. And there are other cleaning requests that do come in that may not be reflected in the 3-1-1 request, but do require mowing as well. So, there is a lot of work we have to do out there, and I know there are challenges. We do send our supervisors out to inspect the work that's being done on a routine basis. And if we have to call people back, we have to call people back. I'll leave our remarks there and be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Hi. Hi, this is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director from the Department of Finance.
Hi, this is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director from the Department of Finance. You know, first want to just echo some of the, the comments that we've heard from other agencies. Our bill report summarizes each of the functions in, in each of those agencies. And so, you know, we don't have to go into a, a lot of detail there. But, you know, to summarize, from our perspective, we are aware that this has come up. This did come up in the budget hearings this year, especially at the end. In our discussions with the agencies, we do agree that there are different requirements in each of the agencies. You know, as an example, Rec and Parks with more of a pure, you know, mowing function. DPW having sometimes that cleaning requirement on, on top of the mowing. And then DOT, as it was described, more of like a landscaping or, or vegetation management function as well. So there are different requirements. And so we do think there is, you know, reason to believe that having separate agencies do this might be the best process. Having said that, we do agree with the, the comments that the city administrator mentioned at the beginning, that we should be looking from, you know, a technological potential improvements or, or better procurement strategy. I can't say that we have done a detailed financial analysis like what was requested earlier, I believe, from Councilman Burnett. But we, we will commit to do that across this whole, you know, this whole area of spend in our budget. I suspect that, you know, as the city administrator said, we believe that, you know, having everything with one vendor does produce some risk for the city, that, you know, having all of your eggs in one basket, so to speak, could cause some, some problems. Having said that, there might be opportunities for just economies of scale. If we have, you know, if we can merge a couple of the contracts together and see if we can get a better per price, you know, per unit price for some of these services. We also will look at the idea of doing some of this in-house versus contract. We know that it's kind of a mixed bag in, in most agencies. There might be reason to believe that we should in-source or outsource some of this work. And so we will, as part of that working group, take care of that analysis and, and participate in that. So with that, happy to take any other questions from, from members of the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Karen, are there any, is any public testimony? Oh, I'm sorry. Control, I just missed you. I'm sorry. Controller's Office, Andy Frank. Apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Good morning. I'm Andy Frank, Acting Real Estate Director in the Controller's Office. We stand by our bill report. By way of background, the Department of Real Estate is responsible for 1,300 owned lots. And we work with the Department of Public Works for mowing needs and with Recreation Park for service needs. We are not funded to sufficiently address the greening needs of these properties, but we support the resolution's intent to bring greater centrality to the ground maintenance process. And I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Appreciate it from the Controller's Office. We will take public testimony. For those who sign and using their computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to testify. We'll start with you. Now we go through the users who called into the hearing. Attendees who call cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by committee staff, one by one. You will hear two beeps when you're unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, then simply they need to say they do not want to provide testimony after the two beeps. If any speakers are audible, they will be directly called back. Ms. Karen, do we have any public testimony?
Mr. Chair, at the moment, there is no raise hands. So I'm going to go into, I'm going to go to the call-in user. We have one call-in user, and you're unmuted if you would like to say something. Hello? Mr. Chair, there are no, there's no public testimony.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilman Burnett, do you have any closing remarks that you would like to say? And I wanted to know if you're going to recess or take a vote on this.
So I was hoping we could recess, since there's some outstanding questions and information requests that have been sent by the committee for us to follow up on. And I know I had a couple as well that I just planned to email, but I'll obviously CC the committee on as well. So I, I think we should come back to the table once we kind of have an idea of the cost efficiency that finance is going to be looking at and a little bit more on the coordination effort that the city administrator referenced. If that's okay with you. Other than that, I didn't, I didn't have any, any other commentary at this point. I think a lot of really important issues have been raised by the council. We've received some good feedback on those points from the agency side. But I, I think it would be helpful for us to continue the conversation once we, the, the information requests have been completed and we can come back to the table.
Okay, before we recess, do any committee council members have any questions or comments before we recess this hearing? Okay, well, this hearing has been recessed. Thank everybody for being on the call and thank all the city agents for being on the call. So thank you. Everybody, have a nice day.